All right, so then let's get started because I know some people have a hard stop. So with that, let me call this special meeting of the Board of Education to order for Central Middle School Ed specifications. Do I, I don't, do we need to approve the agenda? I think we're okay. Let's just, yeah, let's go right into it. Okay. So Chris, thank you for joining. We have Mr. Healy. We have the whole team here. Tony, is there anything you want to open with or just go straight into questions?
Yeah, I think we can go straight to questions unless Roger wants to have any comments about what has been updated.
Uh, no, the only comment I would say is I believe you have the latest addition. If up the up to date edits, so I'm curious to hear responses back so we can make whatever edits or changes are necessary now.
Sorry, sounds great. Why don't you go, Ms. Downey?
I apologize for being a little under the weather, so my voice is a little raspy. Before we, and I think like little knit things, Roger, I would just email like little like tweaky things. I don't think we want to spend time on this call. One thing that struck me, I think we're really moving forward well. I'm really happy with the progress. I think we need to, my concern is we're trying to rush. I want to be sure this is done properly and thoughtfully when we send it to the building committee with as much specificity as possible. But I think we've also have a couple of macro issues that we as a group have not discussed. In detail, for example, one thing that's come up is the right size of the building. I know several board members have said, you know, we're building to 511 because that's what state reimbursement allows. However, we're not constrained by what the state process is in terms of what we build. We can build bigger, we're just going to get reimbursed for less. And I think that's kind of a wider community conversation. I frankly think it, another thing, for example, that comes to my head is about energy efficiency. You know, we have the base level of lead silver. I was at a new lab building meeting yesterday, you know. Do we want to go for gold? There's, there's cost benefits. And it seems to be that it might be worth a conversation with the BET, for example, who really, I think, needs to be on board with the process. In terms of where we're going, you know, kind of what's everyone's goal about the size of the building? We don't want to second guess ourselves 10 years from now saying, oh, my gosh, enrollment went way up. They totally chanced, you know, because they were so focused on the state reimbursement process. So I just wanted to throw that out as an initial starting point to people. Specifics, I can get into my specific comments later, but I thought that's, that's an important conversation for this group to have and maybe schedule a time with our, our other colleagues.
Yeah, I agree. I think this whole board feels like this probably won't be for, ready for primetime on Thursday for a vote, which is fine. Because, and I know many of us had this conversation, this is a really, you know, once in a, we build schools for 100 years, so let's make sure we, we get it right. We want to move quickly because we appreciate that this building needs it, but at the same time, you know, we don't want people to look back on this in 50 years and say they were really short sighted, right? So, and I couldn't agree with you more, Christina, and I think everyone agrees, let's not size it for probably 511 kids when our current enrollment is higher than that. Just because we're looking at a 10% reimbursement rate, that's, that's, that's really not thinking about things in a macro way. So, but yeah, that probably is a bigger conversation that we should have with some others. So Joe?
Thank you. I guess Karen sent me a note yesterday, Karen Hirsch, and it, I sort of took a, a step back just more on a general thing when it came to this process. You know, I've been something of a minor critic of this process because of going through the other process before. And it really kind of made me think further that we should be doing a little more work, maybe a lot more work. People are asking me, hey, is the school going to stay open while, while they're building the other school? Are they building it on the back? Where will we go? What, what's it going to look like? Is it going to be a brick stone? What, what, what look are we going for? All these questions that are being asked in the old process, we'd have not the final decision of what it looked like, but we'd have some renderings. We've had, we've had some designs. We could at least fall back on some things we'd look at and actually we bode on saying that it could not necessarily confined to, but could look like this. We don't have any of that right now. We don't, I don't know, the process is different. We've changed our process. We're trying to move this along more quickly. But we, as the Board of Education, are elected to do, well, the school stuff. And we're taking this, uh, this whole project and sort of we're subcontracting in a way out the ed specs. We hired a wonderful team to do that for us and thank you for the good work you guys are doing. And also, but we're kind of passing it off a little prematurely, I believe. I think we're, we're going to give it to the building committee without even knowing what it's going to look like, where it's going to be. Like Christina just brought up what size it's going to be, whether we're taking into consideration growth in the student population. I just believe there's, 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 there's a lot of things which, which as the Board of Education, we should have more control over and hand it off to the building committee with a few more decisions, some design, some understanding, so we could answer some of the, the questions I'm getting about what's it going to look like? Is it going to be taller, shorter? Is it going to be in the same footprint? Is it going to be simultaneously built in the back there while we're doing the front? Is it going to be designed in a certain way? I, I can't answer anybody, any of these questions and we're, by the time we've okayed the ed specs and handed it off, we won't be able to answer those questions. Somebody, we'll have to ask somebody else and then turn, relay it back to us.
Karen Hirsch?
Joe, Joe shared some of my thoughts as, as has Christina. You know, I, I know, I'm sure I'm not the only member of the board who has asked some questions and I feel from, you know, our first opportunity looking at these that, that we really haven't gotten as detailed of a response to, that I'd really like to have, you know, I'm just using as an example, comparison of space. From what we have to what we have now, required, you know, size of spaces. We've talked about wanting to build the bigger, bigger, building bigger. And, you know, it's very hard. This is the fifth iteration of these ed specs that we've seen. And it's, it's not redlined, so it makes it very difficult to really see the comparison of what's been revised. I, my husband actually ran the thing through a program to help me determine that and, and a lot of it is just, you know, smaller edits. So, you know, it's, it's been really hard to sort of follow and, and this is, this is not necessarily due to the, the wonderful team that's sort of behind doing all of this work. I just think this is a separate discussion that the board has, has had before. We've gotten several versions of ed specs in the past year or two for different buildings and projects from different companies. And each one is laid out slightly differently. It makes it very hard as a board for us to sort of compare, contrast, for us to use those to discuss with BET, RTM and other members of the community when it's really hard because we, we don't have a specific set of things that need to sort of be included or ways that they're shown to us as, as Joe was mentioning. You know, I know to me, one of the most important things we really have to discuss is again, size, specific location of where the facility will be so that we know what we're going to be doing with the 511 students that will be there next year and going forward. You know, are, are we going to be building it in a different space on the campus? I know our neighbors have asked for traffic studies and I was going to go out of my way to thank the, the individuals who are redrafting these ed specs for including some of those notes within this version of the ed spec. So I really appreciate that. Noting that we have to have the traffic study, noting that some of these are concerns that we as a board have brought up, have already been included in this iteration of the, of the ed specs. So I, I wanted to say thank you. They've also noted that we really want to ensure that we're working with Parks and Rec and our tree warden. That was added. So I really appreciate all of those notes having been included. But I do agree with the other colleagues that have spoken before that I think this is a bit of a larger conversation. And I'd really love to also include Principal Healy and some of the other administrators to their thoughts on the size of the facility overall. You know, I, I noticed there have been some small shifts in sizes of spaces like storage to enlarge other spaces, but that doesn't address the fact that likelihood of, of having a larger student population i- is, is probably realistic. Again, I, I'm a parent of a former Glenville student. We built that building based on the largest number of enrolled students that, that we had had at the time. And everybody thought we might need more and certainly we built it, they came. And I think that will be the same with this incredible new facility that we're building. So those are just my initial thoughts. I have some comments specific to the ed specs once we get to, get to that.
Okay, Ms. Kowalski?
So Karen and, and Joe, I, I appreciate both of your comments and I guess my, my question goes to maybe Tony on this one as well as, as Kathleen. While I do think Karen and Joe's comments are certainly valid and I don't want, my next comment is not meant to diminish those comments, but rather just to pose an additional point. Aren't all of those things that are concerns represented by Joe and Karen somewhat taken on later in the A and E phase as opposed to just what we're doing in the ed spec? And I think there may be just some general, I don't want to use confusion or misunderstanding, but like I think what we've done before, right? We've had the ability to see more and, and, and all of those things were very pretty pictures and renderings. But at the end of the day, we were just approving what we're doing here, which is the ed spec piece of this, which is just what is, what's going to, the contents of the building, but not necessarily in the design and the A and E phase will deal with the, the parking issues, the traffic issues, where the building can be placed, whether or not we're going to keep the building, whether or not we should be keeping the building currently open while we're building another building and what will that feasibility go in, you know, how will we address those issues? Doesn't that all come at a later stage as opposed to now? I know we've answered, talked a lot about that at different points and asked those questions when dealing with Julian Curtis and old Greenwich, but at the end, we've had those conversations, but really in the end, we were just approving the ed spec. So Dr. Jones, could you just add some little bit on that for us? Because I think we're, we're, we're kind of mixing and matching, you know, wrong pieces here.
I, I agree 100% Karen with what you're saying in that we've already done kind of a basic rendering in the master plan. So we could go and do that again, but it doesn't mean that that's what the building is going to look like until the building committee comes together and they, you know, we still have to get the soil testing to see what the stability is behind the building. We have, there's a lot, the traffic study, all of that's part of this next phase where the building committee is looking at all of that. And there's certainly people on here that have far more expertise than I do. So Chris or Roger, feel free to chime in, but it is the next phase.
I'll let you take this, Chris.
Right. Hi, good morning, everyone. So yeah, the, the next phase, this is really just program development. The next phase when you hire an architect is really when, when you can include, you can include or not include as many components in the next phase as you want. You want a full traffic study done, you can include that. You want the soil testing done i- in the next phase, you can include that. If you don't want it, then you don't include it. It, it varies really district to district. You know, some districts just look at it and they say, okay, we're going to do ed specs, kind of the process that we've done now. It goes through budget approval or referendum, whichever the, whichever the approval process is respective to the district. And then after that, a full RFP is issued for an architect that, that includes a full design complement. So you get traffic, you get soil, you get civil engineering, you get structural engineering, you get mechanical electrical plumbing, you get everything. You get the full complement of design at that point. And that's when some of the decisions that you're talking about right now then tend to be made, right? So then it's, okay, now we look at the soils on the site and we, we really figure out, you know, where the placement of the building can go. And for the most part, I, I don't think I've, I, it's, it's not that often that you run into a site where it says, oh, well, we thought we were going to be able to put it here, but we just can't put a building here anywhere. Most often times you can put a building there. Sometimes it, it may involve a little bit more earthwork. It might cost a little bit more. You might have to do, you know, you might have to over and over reinforce the concrete, you know, there's, there's things around it, but for the most part, you can put a building on an existing site. So.
Can I just jump in just for one second? Sorry to interrupt.
Sure.
I maybe, I'll speak for myself and I think we understand the procedure and thank you for re-explaining it. I do understand the procedure of going forward. I know what goes forward. Maybe others might be gaining more from that, but I think the point that I'm trying to make, and sorry to jump ahead of you, Laura, I saw your handout, that was up before me, but I'm sorry. But I'm just responding to the, we are blindly putting forward ed specs for another use, I don't know a better word, but random group of people that are not elected and we don't know who they are at this point. We know one representative because we'll be able to have one representative on that building committee. And that building committee will themselves make all these decisions during the A and E process. The old process used to put a suggestion that we voted on, some pretty pictures and some renderings and some drawings of what we kind of wanted from professionals telling us how it could look, certainly not written in stone and could change a lot in the next level. But we're handing it over without any even a suggestion of what we want it to be like and look like and what the actual building is. We're just handing this, this building committee, just, well, 75% what I was told in a previous meeting was standard stuff we had to have in a, a building in middle school. And so we, we talked about 25% of things which are classrooms and gyms and, and cafeterias. And just basically saying, you guys need this, some group of people that we yet, have yet to know who they are, are going to now design our middle school. The Board of Education, they're going to design our middle school.
If I can, if I can just, if I can just respond to that very quickly.
Yeah, because then I want to, I, I think I have the right answer in the middle.
The only body that can make changes to this document is this current body. The Board of Ed, the, this document goes to, think about this as a roadmap. The, the educational specifications are a roadmap that are given not only to the, to the building committee that's established, but also to the architect and the design team. So if you give them all of these things and you say, this is what we want in our new middle school, and they come back and they say, well, we're not going to do this, this and this. At that point, that's a conversation between the building committee and the Board of Ed because there needs to be a decision made and an agreement, and then the ed specs need to be revised and approved again by this body to then reflect those changes.
But once we hand, once, I'm sorry, once we hand the ed specs off, we're done.
No, you're not.
Oh, we're not.
Maybe I'm confused. I'm sorry.
You're not done at all.
No.
You are through this process, all the way through.
So let me see if I can wrap this up, not wrap it up. I, I'm trying to take everyone's different opinions and I understand what I said that I don't want to rush this. I meant, I don't want to rush the ed specifications. And what I really meant is I think the size of the building is something that we all have to really agree on before we hand off the ed specifications. And Joe, just to correct you, we actually do know most of the members of the building committee at this point because the RTM has put them up. Um, they will officially be voted on on Monday. The, our Board of Ed liaison, the BET liaison hasn't been stated yet, but obviously we're sort of in control of that. So, um, so that is being formed and it actually is a pretty, I, I don't know all of them. But it is, reading their resumes, it's a pretty impressive group. So, but back to the original point, we are the Board of Education and I think our focus is not really so much landscaping and things like that, but what is the programming of the building, right? And that is the educational specification. But more than anything, before we hand it off, it is about the size, which is all about money. So to Christina's original point is maybe this is a conversation that we should be having a little bit too with the BET because I would hate to sort of say, we're going to build a building for 2,000 people and it's going to be, you know, and they're going to say, that sounds great, but how about no? So, um, but I think building for 500, I think we could all agree is really short sighted. And I remind everyone that our, since Greenwich's reimbursement rate is so low, don't focus too much on it because it's, it's, we're only getting 10%. So it's the incremental, right? From the five, say we build it for 700, let's do the numbers. And if someone can tell me, I mean, Tony, we did, it's basically classrooms I'm now looking at, right? So if I'm going to size my building from 511 to 650, can someone tell me what I'm, how many more classrooms in my building effectively? Mr. Healy, maybe you can tell me?
That's probably better answered by Roger. I know he ended up in the Q and As, but go ahead.
I think we, I did answer that question when it was put to me previously about two weeks ago. I can't recall my answer offhand, but I think it was, what happens is, well, first off, let's, I want to get something straight. The school actually is not being built to 511 students. That just happens to be your highest projected enrollment. But the school at 104,000 square feet is built closer to 600 students. Okay. According to state standards. Okay. So that's why at 104,000 square feet, you're over the allotted amount and you, and your reimbursement rate would be discounted because of that. But back to the other one, I, I think I'll try to find if I can see where I put my answers here. I think if you were to build and you had an extra 50 students, a bubble came through and there was an extra 50 students in the school, you could probably get by with, without doing too much in terms of the current program. However, if you add 100 students, that puts an unfair burden on the entire program. And overall, you would have to figure that you'd have to add somewhere between three to six classrooms. In addition to that, other spaces like auditorium, gymnasium, media center would probably have to be enlarged to accommodate that size population. So those are the things that would be factored into a new design and would increase the square footage as well as the cost. I hope that helps.
That helps very much. I'm going to come back to some more questions, but let me push it off to Laura Costin, I believe was next.
Oh, I'm a central parent and I cannot tell you how many times, you know, I have been in that in the gym and in the auditorium and I just, you know, want to put that, put that out there that again, when it relates to size, I want to be sure that we have adequate space for the families who come to, like I did, for every play, every musical performance. And, you know, we also utilize that auditorium for, for meetings and I just, I hope that we're in the scope of the size of, of this building, building it adequately. And, and one of the other things that I had a question about was, you know, we constantly hear about gym and field space. We don't have enough. Is one gym enough? Is, does it need an elevated track maybe? You know, so just some of those little, you know, little things that really do affect the way the building is utilized by students are really important as we do think about the size of the school.
Great. Okay, Karen Hirsch and then Mr. Healy.
My point's probably been addressed. I, I was going to say, I, I, I understand, you know, again, what, you know, Ms. Doherty said the same thing. It's a lot of the stuff that we're talking about does come into the next phase, but I do feel though, you know, we've had this discussion before. Yes, if we get, if we approve these ed specs and we realize that, you know, that there's other things that need to be addressed, we have to go through the same process again to approve them and have them go through town processes to be approved. You know, we need to do this right so that we can get this moving forward. I, I just don't want to be put into a position where we are rushing to have these, the first round done and realizing after the fact that we still have questions that need to be addressed or that the administration at Central has questions or, or areas that need to be discussed. And again, we've talked about rightsizing the building. Yes. They, it is built larger than state standards, but I think a lot of that has to do with the, if I was not incorrect, I think you mentioned in past meetings or during Q and A documents that that was based on a larger than required auditorium and, and a few other details. But, you know, again, I, I just want to do this properly for the students for Central Middle School, current and future. You know, we, we do get one shot at this. So, you know, but when we get to the ed specs itself, I have a few questions. So I'll let others speak.
Mr. Healy?
I just thought it might be helpful to add in a little bit more about the sort of nuances and logistics of building size and like the potential impact. If, if people wanted to hear a little bit about that. So just a personal example, nine years ago, I took over scheduling at Western Middle School when this school was 503, I think, students. As we know now, Western is 640 students. So just, you know, looking at the demographic shift and number shift in, in a local middle school, one of the other ones. As the numbers increased over the three years I was doing the schedule there, it, it does become a challenge because you're really utilizing every space, right? So for example, when you have teachers who have team meetings and they meet in the classroom that isn't being used, the more kids that are there and you're pushing through at that time, they can't use that classroom because another teacher is teaching in that classroom. So you have to make sure there's a place where they can meet and things like that. Another big consideration for size too, and Roger mentioned a lot of those common areas, but the big one I wanted to put out there because that's the popular one is the cafeteria. If the cafeteria isn't big enough to hold a grade level, then you have to go to more than three lunch waves. If you go to more than three lunch waves, then kids are eating at 9:45 in the morning and all the way through until 2 o'clock in the afternoon. Then when you're looking at that from another standpoint, you're talking about when are we building in the afternoon snack for the kids who eat lunch at 10? And when are we building in the morning snack for the kids who don't eat lunch until 2, right? Then it becomes where a kid's eating around the building and things like that. So I just want to point out there too as well, when you're looking at something like a cafeteria, the cafeteria and lunches really drive your bell schedule. And if you don't have enough space for kids, then it can really change the rhythm of the day. And as we know, the way that middle schoolers grow and have to eat at this point in time, it becomes a critical component. So, you know, the, the building size is, is really important in terms of having access to classroom spaces. But I just wanted to mention because it didn't come up about the cafeteria and being able to hold a grade level lunch. Also from, from sort of the SEL side of things, when kids are on different teams in middle school, the fact that they can actually eat lunch with their friends in their grade level at the same time becomes a big part of their day too. So again, just a consideration in terms of sizing everything and making sure it's in the right space for potential growth.
Tom, I love that you just brought us back to the actual realities of children and not just numbers. So thank you so much. And especially after we've spent so much time in the past couple of weeks talking about the Greenwich High School Student Center and how important it is. In fact, I actually was asking my children this morning. One of the best things, and I think Cody noted at the meeting, that we've heard of from the Central Middle School was from one of your students that said, could we put the clash, the bathrooms closer to the cafeteria? And so I mentioned that to my Central Middle School student. She's like, yes, he's right. And then my high school student chimed in and saying, why are you guys not thinking about this, like a nicer student center for Central Middle School as you're doing it for the high school? So maybe we should be asking the children for some of their thoughts because they definitely, they're living it every day and it's really important that we're not short sighted about this. So, Ms. Downey?
Thank you, Tom and Roger. That was, those were good explanations. I just want a couple of things. To Joe's point, Joe, we have approval process. We get to approve the architect. We get to approve the design, you know, we're going to, we're going to, we are a way to make sure, we are going to continue to be involved in this process. So I am concerned, I'm not concerned about that. I'm just concerned that we be specific in terms of our expectations with the building committee. Roger, this is the first I've heard about that we're building to a capacity of 600 students. You know, we've all been focused on that 511. That for me gives me much greater comfort. I don't know about my colleagues, back to my whole notion of rightsizing the building. I, I think, you know, that's probably close to where Central has sat at its highest point. Is that true, Tom? Right. So if we're, if we're talking about it has the capacity to be where the building has, you know, the number of students that we've had before, that is a much more comforting notion. So I think I'm less concerned about the sizing issue if we really feel comfortable with that. And I think focusing on the specificity of what we can accomplish and, and I think we can beat a dead horse on this potentially, right? If we all get comfortable about the size and we all get comfortable that the document communicates to the building committee what our expectations are. I, I just could, yeah, because I've been on two building committees and I know I've harped on this, but the more detailed, the better. I think we have a lot of good detail in here. I think we've progressed really far. I think we're, if we're comfortable with the size, which I am now comfortable having heard this conversation, then I would start focusing on the details that we can send along to the building committee. Again, there's checks and balances in the process. And it is, it does look like a very professional building committee, but it's a building committee that's not had a lot of people who've been on building committees. So I think that's why we want to be as clear as possible so that there's no guessing game or them coming back and saying, what did you mean by blank? So that's my thought.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you, Christina. I, I guess I, I, it slipped my mind that you, you actually, we do get to approve the design. Uh, so that helps me a little bit. I guess where I'm kind of stuck is, is if we sort of give them. A basic design that we're hoping for them to understand to design it to, uh, like in the old building processes where we'd, uh. We'd sort of, uh, narrow down a design so at least they'd understand where we were in case we're thinking, uh, uh, something way out there and they're coming out with something way over there. Uh, at least if we.
But Joe, I'm gonna interrupt you.
Please.
In the old, in the old process, the feasibility committee would hire an architect. The A and E committee could hire a completely different architect. And I think anybody who was on New Lebanon would tell you. What the first iteration of that school was, that in the renderings and the final. Were completely different and they use different architects. Just so, just to give you like a sense of, it's not. To a design. I think we as a board have to tell them what we want in the building. And if we don't like the design, when they come to us, we'll say. And I think when they hire an architect, Tony, correct me if I'm right or wrong, do they do some renderings in the proposal when they hire the architect?
Yes, so usually they'll do a presentation.
See, uh, an initial first cut when the architect is hired, if they're totally off mark. Just to give you comfort.
I guess I, I fear that when everything finally gets done, having watched, uh, public projects, uh, uh, move along at whatever pace they do. I fear that some of us, uh, on this, uh, board might not be on the board anymore. So. Maybe what we thought was the right design as, as this thing was, uh, was being put together, uh, that won't get reflected. Uh, when actually design is put in front of the, uh, board for a vote. I guess maybe that's the concern I have. Without putting a, uh, without putting something, uh, some sort of design that, that we kind of want and think would be the right design. Uh, some other design might come up, which might not be what we think is the right design.
But you know, the architects are the professionals, right? I mean, I, you know, what I think the building might want, yeah, I, I have nothing personally in my head. What I think the building should look like. And that's why we hire the professionals to come up with different scenarios. You know, an architect may come up with three different renderings for the committee, right? Like, we can go direction A, B, or C. Which one do you guys like? Before they start going down the path. And we will have a represent, and we will have a representative, yeah, on the committee.
And, and Tom, don't take this personally, but somebody designed, uh, Central Middle School before, and I'm not really satisfied. With the design that they made at Central Middle School. So.
Tom wasn't born, so that's okay.
But you weren't born, I understand, but I, I, the pride in your school, I fully understand. But I certainly don't like the design of Central Middle School as it stands now. And there are other schools that somebody, some board of ed. I had the opportunity to design, uh, the, we have the old Greenwich School, which is a beautiful building, very old, but a beautiful building. Uh, Julian Curtis, Cos Cob School, there's some good looking schools we have that some, some very good board of education made sure that it, it was a good. And solidly good looking built school. I'm, I'm afraid that if we give away the control, uh, or don't address this early on. That the, uh, the design might, uh, slip through and maybe somebody who's thinking more, uh, to do it under budget and, uh. And inexpensively it might get more control of the process and not really do a significant building. Those are my fears. Uh, and I'm just expressing them. Thank you.
Um, it might have something to do with the vintage of those buildings too. I mean, it's old Greenwich was, you know, they were perhaps bigger thinkers or something at that time. In terms of architecture. Um, but let's just say, uh, the one thing and Laura Costin, I will go back, we have to get to the specifics of the ed specs. Because what I think, um, hearing is that we're all not far apart. We, we really just want to make sure that we're doing this right. That we're thinking about it for the long term, but that we're still moving, we, you know, we're working hard to get this building committee formed. And we ask them to move quickly so that they could work in the summer. So recognizing that we're not probably going to be ready for Thursday. I think we have to commit to meeting so that we could hand this off. July at the latest, um, because they really, they've committed to getting started and I think we need to commit to therefore heading. Handing them the, uh, specifications as quickly as possible. With the biggest driver, I think. Being the size, because as everyone talks about, that's what we're kind of in control of. That is the part that is going to drive not just one or two spaces, but obviously touch all aspects of the building. And I think Christine is right. We need to have that conversation perhaps with other town bodies. But I know what I need is kind of like, here's the base case, right? The base case is six hundred. And now that I know that, right? The next case is seven hundred. What does that look like? This is just an Excel spreadsheet, I assume. And then maybe we call it the stretch goal, although I don't like using that word because then no one ever signs up for the stretch goal, but, um. Of eight hundred, because let's face it, Eastern's at eight fifty right now or something, right? So, I, I don't think six hundred's the right number, because if we ever, you know, use, Laura Costin said it, I'm not gonna use her words. But if we ever use the word that starts with an R, um. Then we really need to make sure that all three of our buildings could handle the capacity of like what Eastern's currently at. So, um, I think it's important for us to sort of look at those three cases in an Excel spreadsheet and then. Make the decision with other town bodies before we hand off the ed specifications. Uh, Ms. Costin. You are on mute, my friend. Go back. Start again. Off mute.
Sorry, I was in the ed spec document because I think I'm looking at the same one and I just, I didn't see the six hundred number anywhere. I only saw five eleven. So I just, you know, I tried to compare both documents and I, I didn't see the number six hundred anywhere. But, um.
I can explain that if you want to give me a second.
Yeah. Oh, and just so you could maybe review for us some of the changes because we don't really have, you know, that. A kind of red line version. So yeah, any way to address, um. Um, the differences, but I, I only saw the five hundred and eleven number in there. So I, that's why I was concerned.
Hey, the only rea, the reason you're only seeing five eleven in there is because for the, for the state, we just have to use the highest projected enrollment number. So that is it. That's what we use. But in terms, and if you used, if we were building the school to five hundred and eleven students, the schools. The size would be at the bottom line at the final page would be around eighty-five, maybe eighty-six thousand square feet. The fact that we're at a hundred and four thousand square feet, and if you, you're allowed approximately a hundred and sixty square foot per student. So if you do, do the math, I think it actually comes out to about six eleven. So the school is sized for six eleven, but we're not saying that in the document because the state, quite frankly, doesn't care. All they care about is how it's going to affect their reimbursement to this, to the district or the, to, to the town. And that the number they're focused on is what your highest projected enrollment is five eleven. So if we were to build to five eleven, that bottom line number would be reduced back down to like eighty-five or eighty-six thousand square feet. We'd have to chop a significant like eighteen thousand square feet out of that school. So that's why you're not seeing. An enrollment number of six hundred or better in there. Okay?
Thank you. That's very helpful, Roger. Um, Karen Hirsch.
Uh, I was gonna say, before I ask my question, I know that, uh, Laura had asked to see if some, if, uh, they could go over to some of the changes that have been made. Um, so, you know, I, I had a specific question to one of the, the changes I saw, but I, I figured I'd let them go over the changes first.
Roger, would you mind doing that?
Thought it was to ask someone else. Um, uh, I'll hang on for a second. I'll have to bring the document up for myself. So, um, most of the changes were, uh, minor. Uh, uh, because what they were, were, um, responses to, um, questions. And, and then once I realized, you know, that I had, when I answered the question. Uh, both Fran and I decided we had to adapt the educational specification to make sure that that was included in there. So, um, I had also received sheets from I T. Information from our I T department, information from, uh, the facilities department. And all of that information was gone over and put in. So there's, there's a lot of minor edits. It's not anything major. Uh, that occurred. It was more, um, more just minor adjustments. For example, when I talked to facilities. They started telling me about the system that they wanted in for the building management system. They wanted it to be consistent with what was already being utilized in Greenwich. Um, we, we also, for example, had brought up the, when the issue about the tree warden came up. That had to be included and because. You have to understand at this process, we're not getting, we're not getting into the weeds, uh, in terms of design. This is really a framework that we hand off to architectural design teams. And what we do is we instruct them. Uh, in generality. So in other words, we, we don't, we don't know, we don't have enough information and. And quite frankly, you can't have enough information. You can't develop the amount of information you need at this stage to be so specific. As to tell them what type of athletic fields have to go in. We don't know. We don't know where the school's going to get placed on the site. We don't know if it's going to be a one, two or three story building. We don't know. Um, where, how, I mean, things have changed. There's wetland issues since the last school was built. You've got wetlands, you've got zoning changes. All of that has to be taken into account. The traffic study's going to be a factor, where utilities come in. And we can't hogtie the design team by telling them they must do this or they must do that. What we do is we say to them. It's very important to Greenwich that the athletic fields, um, reflect what the community needs. Therefore, you are to meet. With Parks and Rec and the school's facilities department and make sure that you, you get from them the information. Because they will then, the design team is going to be able to give those folks the necessary information. For example, they may say, we've got, we've got three acres that we can dedicate to athletic fields. Do you want soccer field? Softball fields, track, tell us what you want. And that's when it gets into the design process. That's when the board will have some say so. But we don't have any clue how, what they are going to have or what they should be putting in at this, at this stage. So we leave it. You must confer with these folks to get their desires and their needs expressed and put into a, a plan. That will go forward and get built. So you'll see that in there, uh, uh, throughout the document. Um, especially like even, uh, for example, a lot of people expressed desires for, um, energy efficiency. And they want it either solar or geothermal. Um, and all we can say at this point, because we don't know. If the site is acceptable for geothermal, we, we have no clue, but we would tell the design team. That their responsibility is to meet with your energy committee, the board of ed, whoever else wants to be involved. And they are at that point to determine what level of, for example, if they want to go for gold or platinum, that, that can be determined at that stage. And then they can be, they can present to the board and the building committee. What are the items that are going to get them to that level of energy efficiency that they know that they can do? Because now they've got all the information or they're developing the information for the final plans. So that's pretty much the changes that have occurred.
That's very helpful. Thank you. Any notes? Oh, Ms. Hirsch.
Okay, so one of the questions that I had specific to the cha, one of the changes made in this version of the ed specs was on page ten. Um, that you guys had changed that students would, would not be using, uh, lockers in the corridor. Instead, you've now built them, uh. As interior classroom cubbies for personal effects. Um, I'm kind of curious as to why this was revised. Um, it would sort of seem, since we're specifically talking about making sure the educational spaces are large enough to accommodate. Uh, changes in student population, um, why this was revised, because it sort of would make the classroom space smaller. I would think, and the students were, you know, would still need if they're cubbies to take their items from class to class. Um, having had a middle school or two middle school students, you know, oftentimes, you know, some kids use the lockers, some don't. But it's sort of a nice space for them to be able to keep items, uh, lock, you know, in their lockers for, uh, more long term. Some of them have heavy, um, textbooks. Or, or other, you know, they need to keep gym clothes or sports equipment, um, things that they need, not daily, but. And they keep them in their locker. So I'm just curious as to why that adjustment was made. And, um, you know, Mr. Haley as well, if you guys feel that this is going to be best, the way to best suit the students. And, and I know this is sort of a, a minor question, but I noticed that was one of the, one of the changes. And I had one other comment after that on these particular specs.
Okay, uh, when we were interviewing students and, and the administration, what we heard pretty consistently was that the. Students really don't use the lockers in the hallway. So it is, it seemed to me that what we could do is better utilize the space. Uh, uh, and one of the questions we posed to the teachers as well, what, what do the kids do with their personal belongings? They have their coats or their books or whatever. And they said, well, they, you know, they, they keep them with them or they put them under the desk or stuff like that. So we just said, well, what if we just, you know, provided, uh, a section of cubbies where a student could walk in and put their personal belongings in a. Small two by two box. And that way it was safe. Nobody was going to mess with it. And they all seemed to think that was a good idea. Uh, from, I, I was to say, oh, but you know, everybody that we talked to seemed to be positive about that. So we felt that that was a worthwhile change. Also, the corridor space, if you have one sided lockers, you can reduce the width of the, of that corridor space by the. The width of the locker, if you know what I'm saying, because it's no longer in the locker. So that same space that would have been. Utilized in the corridor now would be utilized in a sense for cubbies. So it's really not a loss of space. It's just a reappropriation of it and putting it to the inside of the room. So. And, uh, Tom, if you have anything to add to that, I mean, but that's what I, we heard from much of the, most of the teachers.
Yeah, just, just to echo what Roger said. So we, that was one of the first discussions that we had because actually getting rid of lockers was really something that we. Became accustomed to as a result of our COVID mitigation strategies. Um, and the resounding sort of, um, feedback that we'd even gotten before we knew we were going down an ed spec line. Was how much, um, uh, time, uh, or how much less time, uh, was wasted from students coming in and saying, oh, I forgot this in my locker. And leaving the classroom. When we only have forty-five minute classes, um, there was a lot of time going back and forth and this is in my locker and that's in my locker. Um, you can only imagine in June what some lockers have in them. Um, and so, uh, another, uh, situation that, you know, lunch from December and June is not the same. Um, but, uh, I think the issue was kids got used to carrying their, their bags. Um, a lot of our textbooks now are actually online. So they're not carrying a lot of textbooks. We don't change for gym. Sports equipment is handled in our locker room. So kids during the seasons are bringing their stuff down. They're putting them in locker rooms and they're not dealing with them. The biggest issue that we came up to was really in the winter time, um, with coats and hats and things like that. Um, so the, um, issue is that we felt that if there was a space in each classroom where kids could put things. Now whether that's, we have a system where, um, since we still have advisor base, you know, each day the kids are putting their, their coats and hats in their advisor base. And they stay there in that particular classroom for the day, or whether the kids are walking from room to room and they just have their own cubby space to put them. Um, from an efficiency standpoint, from an access to all material standpoint and from just a routine of the day. Um, the lockers really weren't something that we felt if we weren't, um. Needing to take that space up where necessary, uh, in a new building. And we just felt like, um, the other thing too is for flow. And congregation and what goes on in the hallway, um, when kids stop at lockers, there were a lot of pinched fingers, banged heads and other accidents that happen. When you have, you know, hundreds of kids going through the, um, corridor and going back and forth to locker. So it just seemed like it was better for, for us all around. To just have a dedicated space because we recognized we needed that, but it didn't necessarily have to be a lock space in the hallways.
Thank you. You perfectly answered what, uh, what, what I was wondering. I know we don't have them at the high school really either. They certainly aren't really used there. So. Uh, I, I understand. I just figured I'd double check. I know middle schoolers are still in that in between phase with, uh, trying to learn to organize and, and prepare. And, uh, have what they need with them. Um, and I guess the only other question I had is I, and, and I may, it might have been in some of the earlier specs. And I've noticed it a little more now is some of the security, uh, information and details that are included in there. And I just want to make a note that we have to be very cautious when we're putting some of that information out in a public facing document. And I know. Nothing is very specific, but there were, and I'm not going to point it out here, what I saw, a few, few notes that I can send to you. I just want to make sure that we don't leave ourselves vulnerable. This is obviously just a discussion on ed specs, but once we get closer to. Really noting where things will be, just being careful with it. We have those things not in, uh, forward facing documents. But I appreciate that they were stuffed there detailed so that, you know, the, the community is aware that we, we will be including things to make sure our students are. Uh, as safe as humanly possible there.
So you, you're not going to mention it now, but you will, uh, send.
I will, yeah, I'll happily send an email. I, I mean, I may have just, it might have just been a question as to, you know. Making sure that we're not very specific with, with, with locations of things. That's all.
Thank you very much.
I also just want to still make sure that there's an enable table, Mr. Haley, at the middle school. Um, so, um, I recognize that we have, I think some people had a hard stop at ten. Um. And if I could just talk about, unless anyone has like a burning question right now, I think I want to talk about the process over. To, to make sure we, we bring this to something that we could hand off to the building committee and that we all feel really good about recognizing that it's not the end, Joe. Um, but that we have really found something that we're satisfied with and that they will. Um, especially as it relates to size, um, and programming. So. Our next board meeting is on Thursday. I think I could say, uh, convincingly, this will not be ready for a vote then. However, I think it should be very much a part of our public. However, I think it should be very much a part of our public on there as an info. But I think it behooves all of us to get in sort of our final thoughts and questions by Tuesday. So that on Thursday, this will be sort of the last time we really talk about it. And also I like that because we of course have public comment. So, and I see some Central Middle School parents on here. So please make sure that you guys rally some of the parents to come out at that time. Because then I think that'll be sort of the final sort of big discussion. And then we should probably, we'll need to have a special meeting to have a vote on this. I would say before July, so that the building committee could use the summer as was originally planned. Does, how do you guys feel about that as a process? Thoughts? There's one thumbs up. Anyone else too? Okay. Roger, Dr. Jones, if we commit to getting you all sort of final questions and thoughts for discussion by Tuesday, recognizing that this document then will probably be as it is reposted for next Thursday's meeting. But then if we had additional questions, we could at least put that post them and then the answers, the question, answers could always come to us during that meeting. Does that make sense? Yes, okay.
As it does to me, if I could have all the information, final questions and concerns by Tuesday.
Yeah.
Great.
Yeah. Okay. And I think, I think at least my focus is going to be on sizing at this point. So I think that seems to be many of us. So I might have a few more questions as it relates to some data and perhaps all of us send that all to you, Dr. Jones. And if you have to ask Mr. Hilly for some of those questions, that makes sense.
Could I just ask a question? Just so that we're not getting lost in shuffle, because I feel like there's been a lot of Q and A documents and emails to Dr. Jones. Consolidating this, let's, let's agree on the methodology for sending in these comments. Or I don't know, Tony, you want to be the repository, but I kind of feel like there's a lot of moving directions. So I think clarity, given that we're trying to be precise would be how, how we should communicate those.
So I will share a document out because it's, it's helpful if they all go either to me or to Jonathan Sopranowitz. And that way he actually gets the document ready so that Mike can then post it. So he, he's the one that cleans it up. So I'll send out a link and you can just populate on the Google Doc.
And we can get access to that as well. Then we can, we can kind of see, you know, the comments as you guys are entering them. We could just, we could check in from time to time rather than waiting till Tuesday to get, you know, however many there might be.
Makes sense. Okay. Thank you. All right. So I don't think I see anything else. Mr. Hill, you have to go back to managing a building. If I don't, no other questions, can I get a motion to adjourn? All right, Mr. Kelly, it's Costin, second. Kathleen Stowe, yes. Christina Downey.
Yes.
Karen Hirsch. Yes, Laura Costin. Karen Kowalski.
Yes.
Cody Kittle.
Yep.
And Joe Kelly.
Yes.
Okay, that passes seven zero. Thanks so much. Thanks for everyone joining. We will see you on Thursday. Okay. Have a good day.
Good weekend. Bye.